About two minutes, Tom, one minute.
Stick with her.
Yeah, I think that's it, okay. Meeting of the Sagetuck City Planning Commission for February 17th, 2022 to order and ask the zoning administrator to call the role, please.
Yes, Steve Mans did get in touch with me. His sister died on February 14th. After six months of fighting stage four cancer, that's why he's not here tonight. So he's excused. But I'll go ahead and call the role. Broker here, Crawford.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Gont.
Here.
Harford.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'm entertaining a motion for approval of the minutes from the 20th of January meeting.
So.
Second.
By Gardner, seconded by Harford. This is by acclamation, correct? Cindy.
Pardon?
By acclamation, this vote, right?
Yes, just by voice vote.
Those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Our fourth item on our agenda is opening for public comment. This is public comment on agenda items only and limited to three minutes. If you want to speak, I guess, I don't know if we have anybody online. But if you want to speak and you're here, come to the podium, identify yourself in the city or township that you live in. Tell us what's on your mind.
I don't see anybody with a raised hand, and there will be time to speak during the public hearing as well.
Yes.
I guess when the audience would like to speak, they'll send it. Did I see raising your hand?
Well, should I speak now or during the public here?
Public hearing, because you get five minutes.
Should I speak now or?
No, you'll have a chance.
Thank you.
So none online? None in the house? That brings us to our single item of new business, which is the public hearing regarding special land use and site plan review for 449 Water and 121 Mary Street. I will declare public hearing open. The order of, the order will follow. There'll be a summary first by the zoning administrator as to the application. There'll be a presentation by the applicant. There will then be public comment regarding the application in the following order. First will be those participants, I'm sorry, first off, participants will identify themselves by name and address, and they will address comments to the chair. And comments and questions will be limited to five minutes. But the order will be dealing with this in first, supporting comments, person, online letters, opposing comments, same array, and general comments. There'll be a repeat comment opportunity, again, back in the same order of of opposing or supporting opposing general. We'll have, we'll close public comment. I will close public comment. And then the commission, those of us up here, will do our deliberation and and make determinations as to action. So with that, Cindy.
Yes, um, thank you. The applicant has submitted an application for extending her bar and grill into the little house that sits on the same property and some outdoor seating behind that. She also wants to connect the two buildings with a covered walkway. In the memo that I gave you, I presented a little diagram showing how it meets the fire code. And I gave you the wrong diagram. That diagram does not apply in this case, and the fire department does have an issue with it. With the, the breezeway connection and access. I did give you this copy of photos that the fire chief gave me about how it's difficult to access the rear of the building. So you can keep that in mind. So whatever you decide, it would be subject to review and approval by the fire department. That's about the best overview I can give right now. You did get a new set of drawings today by email, and they're printed on your desk, so I would go ahead and turn it over to the app.
Fair enough. Christine or?
Hi, can everyone hear me? I'm Christine Murphy Pierce. I own Wicks Park Bar and Grill at 449 Water Street, and then I own the little house behind Wicks Park that was bought. It is all on the same parcel. And the address for that is 121 Mary Street. And what I have been renting it as Airbnb, and it has a pretty big backyard and a long alleyway. So what I would like to do is to change the house into a very small speakeasy kind of restaurant where would probably fit maybe 20 to 25 people inside. And then the outdoor backyard area would be used for private events only. It wouldn't be held for tons of, nothing like I do at Wicks Park currently. It wouldn't be, I wouldn't be packing them in, that kind of thing. It would be strictly for private events, wedding rehearsals, wedding dinners. Obviously, I know it's outside, so it has to go by all those rules that anything else outdoors has to, you know, done by 11 o'clock. Lighting has to be a certain way, all those things I'm aware of, and will follow all those rules. In regards to changing of any footprint of the building, there won't be any. The only addition that will be will be the breezeway, but now we have a little bit of an issue. But I guess we can work through that at some point, you know, have that conversation too with the fire chief. We can talk that through. So it's just adding a breezeway, connecting the house into to the restaurant, because I won't be adding a kitchen. I won't be adding a whole bunch of things to the house. Pretty much the house is just going to be gutted on the inside and just have like a speakeasy, dark kind of feeling towards it. So like I said, it's a small scale restaurant, speakeasy kind of thing. It will, you know, obviously, everyone knows my father's a builder in town, so we know all the rules that we have to follow when it comes to the materials, the windows, all of that is in that packet. Um, I forgot to bring up, I have like the actual window, because I know that's always a big issue with some people, but I think it's on one of those. But yeah, so it's, uh, the reason that, the other reason why I did it is I feel like it's a little bit of an eyesore right now. Um, the alley is an eyesore, the gate that I currently use to cover the dumpsters is an eyesore. That needs to be redone. I need to put new concrete down. So it, if you look at the building from the post office and from Catherine's side, it sometimes can be very much of an eyesore. So I would just really like to landscape that side, put some nice lighting in and just kind of make that street a little more cohesive than it looks right now. I think that was, it's, I mean, it's not really changing much of what it, you know, besides the fact it's turning into a 20% speakeasy with event space in the back. Questions or I don't know how this goes?
I, I do have a question. If now's an okay time. So just curious, the speakeasy, is that, that'll be part of Wicks, kind of an extension of it?
Yes, but it's going to be called the cottage at Wicks Park. So it, it, it won't have the same feel. It will be a totally different vibe, kind of feel, entertainment, that kind of thing. It'll be much more of a luxury, of quiet space of, you know, you go in there on a date, when, you know, before or after a date, you're not going in there with your swimsuit on. That kind of thing is, is what it's going to be. But I mean, technically, yes, it's an extension of it.
You'll be able to get food from Wicks.
Yep, it's, it's, we'll have a menu, and that's why the breezeway needs to, so I can attest, so I'm able to bring food back and forth safely.
Okay.
Is, is, is the whole purpose of the breezeway.
Okay.
And it's a small breezeway, like you, no one will even be able to see it from the street because the gate has to go where the dumpsters already are. So my gate will be hiding the dumpsters, the breezeway will go, and then the backyard will be there.
Okay.
So I know it, it's a very strange parcel. So it's very hard to, it, it, it doesn't look as big as it is, and it's a very large piece of property. And the backyard is just not getting utilized. It, with being in the heart of Sagetuck, it needs to be making me some more money. And it's just sitting empty, and it collects all the things that need to get thrown away. It's like a junkyard back there right now.
Okay.
So I want to clean it up. So I'm looking at this as an improvement for Mary Street and bringing, you know, a nice little speakeasy into town. And, and also there is no event space in town besides Coral Gables. There is no place to host a 20-person party, a 30-person party. There is no place to do that. So I would love to be able to give, you know, I just talked to Singapore Yacht Club, and they wanted to, you know, have their spring dinner with me, but they need, they, they just end up going to Coral Gables. So it would be nice to give that more of an option too in town for the weddings and rehearsal dinners and birthday parties and things of that nature.
Is there, is there a privacy fence planned or kind of noise barriers?
Yes, there'll be a privacy fence all the way around.
And will it be open as it's, is this the privacy?
So that's looking at, that's looking from Mary Street.
Okay.
The backyard is in the backside, and it butts up to Catherine's parking spot, and then it butts up to the Ivy Inn. Yeah, you can see it clearly on there. So however, you, you know, we were unsure on how tall the fence can be, what you guys want me to use when it comes to the fence, all of those things. So right now, there's just a wooden fence that separates me from Catherine and the Ivy Inn.
A question about the, I'm using the word patio, I'm not sure how that's being described, but that southeast corner, which is where you're going to have some outdoor seating, is that what I, is that what I understand?
So, yes.
So it'd be.
Where's the pointer?
Russ?
Yeah.
So that's where that.
Yes, just outdoor space, yes.
And will that be bringing up to 24?
That will, yes, that, that's big enough to accommodate 20, 25 people.
Yeah, that wasn't showing any relevant elevations that I saw.
Okay.
It was, it was shown on the drawing, but nothing on the elevations that you produced. So thanks for being updated once as well.
Okay, you're welcome.
Christine, you said same parcel, forgive me, were you?
Oh, no, I was just going to ask just to confirm. We saw it in the, in the notes, but this has not been historic yet.
No.
No, they couldn't, they didn't have a quorum.
Right. So they're going to have, that's where the window discussion would take.
Okay, thanks, Russ.
Yeah, sure.
Perfect.
So do we know when that's going to take place?
March 4.
March 4.
Do we have a court, is there?
You better have a form.
Okay, it's time. Yes.
Make sure that was noted for those that maybe don't.
Thank you.
Is, I know you own that, all of the property in the, in the little diagram. You own all the property on that little diagram there?
Yes, I own all that property.
Are they separately planted?
No, they are not.
Christine, will there be music both outside and inside?
There could be a solo person playing outside, depending on the event, but there will not be big bands or anything like that out there. It would be more for like, if a wedding rehearsal had a solo guy, that's all I'm looking to do back there. It's not going to be like the bands I have inside at Wicks.
I was just wondering about the bands inside that music and a band outside and another band inside the speakeasy.
It, not all going on at the same time. That would be a lot for me to manage, so not all the same time. And the speakeasy is small, so even to put someone in there, it's not really, that's not the, what I'm looking for, the live music. At Wicks Park, I definitely love my live music there. It works there. For the speakeasy, it's not going to be music. I mean, there'll be music playing, but it's more of an intimate conversation where you go to talk to people. Um, and then, like I said, the backyard will be more for event space and wedding rehearsals and things like that. People also want to talk. So it would be quiet music. And I still have to follow the 11 o'clock nose ordinance and all those, you know, things, so.
Would you, excuse me, would you ever have events in the so-called speakeasy or?
Yes, if someone wanted to rent it out, there could be an event that went on there.
And how many seats?
It will probably be about 25, 30 seats inside.
And then how many seats outside?
Probably about 25.
It's not a very large rehearsal.
No.
How many, I wonder how many members they have at Singapore Yacht Club?
I have no idea. But I do get many, many requests for wedding rehearsals and private birthday parties and family reunions that come into town. And I, and to have it inside at Wicks is hard for me to do just because the music is loud at Wicks. It's not an intimate affair at Wicks. It's much more of a party vibe, so, and private events are a great place to make good money.
Do you feel like people are willing to put up with the variables of the weather when they plan a, an event?
Yes, when they know it's going to be outside, yes.
What happens if it's inclement weather outside?
Then it's just canceled or, do you know what I mean? I can't control mother nature, so we would have to, plan B would be, it can go inside, you know, we could even do something inside. I, I don't know how that would work, but something would be done.
I have another question regarding the use. So guests would be arriving on the Mary Street.
Yep, so there's a big bay window where the door is going to go.
And then, once they're inside the house, they would enter the patio from that.
Yep.
We could keep.
Okay.
No.
So the, the front off of Mary Street. Yeah, and then they'll walk straight through, and there'll be the sliders that are shown on the, the rendering, and they'll just walk straight through.
Right, and they're going to enter the panel here.
From the building, the building, yes.
Will there be any ingress or ingress for guests into Wicks?
No, they will not be able to get into Wicks into this building.
Okay, so this is a residential property.
It's.
From a youth standpoint, it's going to increase the, this guy's on your commercial grade side, right? Is it?
What does that mean?
Well, bathrooms and.
Oh, yeah, HDA, yeah, all those things. Yeah, Randall's my contractor. All of that will be, yes, handicap bathrooms. That's why the door will be big, so everyone, yes, it will all be, you know, I can't get a food, you know, yes, all of that will be done.
And there's enough space in there with all of that for 25 to 30 people?
Yes.
What about bachelorette parties?
Those can stay at Wicks Park Bar and Grill.
It's not the same thing as saying they cannot be in here.
Um, I mean, I can't discriminate. They were not going to, I mean, if they, let's say they call, they make a reservation. I have 13 girlfriends coming in. Okay, great, I'll take your reservation, 13 girlfriends. And then I don't ask them if it's a bachelorette party, or if it's a stag party, or if it's, if, when someone make a reservation.
I get that.
Okay, then.
But I think, just to me and from things that have been said to me.
Okay.
Bachelorette parties are kind of their own breed.
Oh, absolutely. I host a lot of them. A day, I mean, sometimes five at night.
And, and they tend to be, if not unruly, at least on the loud side of things.
Right. Well, I mean, it, it's, I'm not, it's not a library, so there is going to be some noise coming from there. Do I like, but when they, the, if they make a reservation for the outdoor area, it would be for a private event. Like, I will know all the details of those things. Like, it can't just be Cindy calling, be like, hey, I need a 13-person party at the back of the cottage. That's not going to work. The private space is for only wedding rehear, like, only parties that are going to go off of a certain menu are paying a certain kind of money. Does, do you know what I mean? It's, and if it's a bachelorette party and they want to pay $9,000 or whatever, then so be it. But it's, you, you, you get the whole space in the back. It's not just one reservation, one, like, 13 top and 15 top and 12 top. Does that make sense?
Kind of.
Like, the backyard, you get the backyard. And you pay for the backyard. And with that comes, you know, the food, there'll be four types of menus to choose from, that kind of thing.
And the food just arrives through the space between the two buildings or?
It will go through, it will go through the breezeway and just like the way the guests come in.
But the breezeway will be for exclusive use of, of.
Employees only.
And then, so trying to help me understand the usage of this from, from a land use standpoint.
Okay.
What I'm hearing from you is that you envision this as being a bit of a different clientele, a bit of a different crowd than Wicks Park itself.
Yes.
So would it have, would you envision having similar business hours? Would you envision, because speakeasies to me, if you want to refer to that, are like four in the, four in the morning kind of deals.
Well, we have to be close at two.
Good.
So that's rule number one.
Right, so where I'm going with this, though, is that this is not going to cannibalize Wicks Park business. You want to add.
Yes.
So.
It's, it's, it's a totally different kind, like you said, clientele, hours of operations, things of that nature. It's not going to be a sandbar where it's the last stop. It would be a first stop with a date. It would be maybe on your way home from a date, or you have a business meeting. Or you are meeting your, you know, a friend that you haven't seen in a long time, and you really like to have a conversation. At Wicks, it, you can't. It's loud as hell in there. It's, it's, it's a different kind of feel when you go to Wicks, which I love Wicks very much. But the cottage will be much so a quiet, intimate kind of space when it comes to that.
Yeah, and where I was going with it, and I know that the code doesn't speak to this for this type of a proposal, but when you talk about additional 20 to 25 people, that's 20 to 25 additional cars, infrastructure needs and things of that nature, and I've heard comments from neighbors that, well, parking is difficult anyway. It's not a parking problem. It's more a walking problem, in my opinion. But the point I'm trying to make is this is going to increase the intensity of this space in the area more so than it already is, and it's, from a hearing from neighbors, it's to the breaking point in terms of just activity and cars and not enough space for people, so. Um, yeah, so that's, that's kind of where I'm.
I mean, the whole town is at a breaking point.
Well, just that area too.
I mean, which is so funny, because 12 years ago, I couldn't get a person to walk down that far. So to me, this isn't a bad problem to have, that people are coming, do you know what I mean? Like, I understand the infrastructure and that it, it, at some point, it boils over and it explodes. But at the same point, it took me 12 years to get people to come to Wicks Park Bar and Grill. So for like, you know, and it's been a draw with barge, with retro boat, with fish lads. I mean, it's slowly pushing the town to go out. So I don't feel like that's going to make, that this one will make that town, this side of town explode anymore.
Make sure I clarify my point. Parking is not part of the discussion.
Right.
In terms of the land use and the intensity is.
Right.
Discussion, in my opinion.
Understood, understood.
So that's where I'm coming from.
I understand. Uh, I guess, and the, it's, it's also a place that can be a year-round place and that I foresee being a winter, fall kind of thing, also, spring thing that can bring people in the town on the, on the seasons that we don't have all of the people here. Like I said, I don't want bathing suits and things like that in this, in, in the cottage. So therefore, you know, I foresee that being like a, you know, used a lot more in the winter kind of feel. So it kind of maybe will be a draw to do some things in this, in the wintertime and spring, fall kind of thing also. It's just, you know, just trying to feed more people in town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I know the answer, but there's no overnight stays here, correct?
No. No, it's going to be full-time cottage, the cottage at Wicks Park. It'll be a restaurant.
Do you need a new liquor license or do you?
I do not, because it's on the same parcel.
Ah, okay.
So what you do is you, you, with the MLCC, you add a bar, like how Coral Gables has quarter bar, piano bar, that kind of thing. You just add a bar.
Ah, okay. And then one other question I had is, what is the little square existing building?
That, that was a shed that's torn down.
Oh.
It was like a shed of a catch-all, and that is torn down.
Okay.
Would you say where the dumpsters are going to be located?
The dumpsters aren't going to move. They're in the same spot.
I don't know where that is.
That's fine. That's great that you can't see them. That makes me happy. Where's the button?
It's the one that looks like the sun.
The dumpsters are right here. And the gate's right there. The dumpsters are right here. And there's a door right here and a door right here already. So this is where the breezeway is going to go, if I can work it through with the fire chief. That's what the plan is. And then, so the dumpsters will still be here. Everyone will come through here. They'll come through here to the backyard.
I don't want to speak for the fire chief, but I know I've heard some of his concerns.
That's fine.
Getting equipment, not to that spot, but to the, to that patio back there to get people out of the back of that house.
Okay.
And there's, it's kind of zero access otherwise. And an overhead anything overhead makes that.
What do you mean?
Adds a degree of difficulty, any kind of roof that's crossing over in your path.
Okay.
For the fire people, isn't it? Again.
Right.
I'm no fire.
I'll set up a meeting with the chief, and we'll try to talk through things, you know, construction things to do to work around that.
How will we, Cindy, how will we know? Do we just take it on face value, value that after Chief Janik visits with the applicant, that if they work something out, it's fine?
You, if you approve anything, any part of it, or a part of it, or all part of it, it has to be reviewed and approved by the fire chief before it can get a permit. So if the chief cannot approve it, then I cannot issue the permit.
And just along those lines, it's kind of a related question is, I know what, what we're reviewing is the site plan. So if that's, do we need some kind of schematic with all these points on it, on that parcel, you know, including, you know, the, the breezeway, the location of the garbage receptacles, kind of all of the, the, you know, kind of all those data points on something that we actually approve that's finalized? I just want to make sure procedurally, this is the new person's question. I just want to, because I'm, I'm sort of imagining we, it seems like we approve the site plan, and I want to make sure it's.
You're approving two things tonight. You're approving the site plan.
Right.
And the special land use. The site plan could have more detail on it than it does, although. a survey is a pretty good representation of what's there and existing. It doesn't have the doors on it where you come through, or how you get in, or how you get out, but, um, I think we've got a really good explanation of what happens, and this recording does become part of the record. So any representations that are made by the applicant are, are, we hold them to it. So.
So this would be pretty typical.
Yes.
Presentation.
I think it's, I mean, as, as, as difficult it is if you're in Christine's position. The the issue is it relates to overall safety of the entire site in a, in an environment which can be crowded, loud, noisy, music, dancing, in both ends and whatever. That, that's, that's a multiplier factor for, for safety. I, I think back to the nightclub fire that happened on
Right.
South State Street in Chicago, where dozens of people were, because people stack up and panic and all of the rest of that. So in terms of being confident as to what's where and what's allowed to be where, I think it's, I think it's wise for all concern, you're, you guys as well, that that stuff be nailed down, so.
Well, I mean, we'll get an occupancy number, you know, we'll get, you know, just like with any, the fight, there's gotta be certain fire exits, you know, it's, so it's not like we're just taking this and not, you know, like when I even did one little remodel at Wicks, I had added a fire door. So I, I'm well aware of the safety protocols and everything, and it's not gonna be a concert back there where I'm trying to pack in fifty to a hundred people. It's, it's much more on a smaller scale than it is on a bigger scale on any level. And like, I mean, and I'm not trying to sugarcoat it at all. I don't wanna take on another big one. Like, I have Wicks. That's a lot to manage and, you know, for the safety, cuz sometimes I do get, you know, it does get concerning. So this one is not, this one is meant to be chill and quiet and, you know, an occupancy of, you know, you, you need a reservation to get in. If you don't have a reservation, you can't get in. So like those, those rules and stuff will definitely be, you know, followed kind of thing when it comes to safety.
I get all that, but I'm trying to deal with the whole, whole parcel and, and in my head, that, that that back patio. If a, if an emergency issue arose north or west of that, those people are in a world of hurt. With no way really out, unless you can.
So there is, yeah, the, go ahead, Randall. Yeah, can we, Randall talk? He's my contractor. Yeah.
There will be numerous, there's gonna be at least two exits from the back patio area. On the east side of that house, there's about a five-foot breezeway there, or between the parking lot and.
No, I'll get it for you. Yeah.
So right here is about a five-foot area, which will have an exit from this point. It's not gonna be like a the normal use exit is gonna be an emergency type of exit right here, or to, to get some stuff for events in there as well. Cuz this could be a little easier in bringing stuff all the way through. So this whole area is that parking lot. And it actually comes to, was this line probably here? So they actually have, if they were to, you know, come in through here, there will be a fence around here. There'll be a gate here, and there'll be a secondary gate in this location. Probably a little fireplace there, but you'll have a secondary gate to allow people to leave and get out if necessary, which I'm assuming in most, like, fire codes, they will wanna see things like that. You're not gonna just be approved and, you know, be able keep people in there like cattle. I mean, you're gonna have exits for it.
And we have an alley between IVN and my building.
So where the fifty-eight is.
Yeah.
Yes.
Where his, yes, so that's an alley right there also.
Yeah, so there is actual accesses that are not blocked, so there is access to get out. So that's something I could talk through with the fire chief as well, to maybe help solve some of the issues here.
So is that a common alley, or is that a?
My alley.
The one that's to the south of.
Yes, so that's.
The one that's.
That's IVN, and that's me.
This is IVN?
That's IVN, and that's me.
No, this is you. This is not the IVN. This is the French market.
Well, he owns IVN.
Okay.
It's his land. So that's, I'm sorry, but it's the guy.
This is where the accent would be, is.
Yes, and then that goes to water.
Yeah, right. So, cuz I was thinking back this way. If you look back this way. Yeah, right. Yeah. But you're talking about an exit that's gonna go out to the south of your building between.
Water street.
Totally defer to the experts, fire experts on whether that's even acceptable. So, totally defer to the fire experts on that one, because that's beyond the scope of our.
Right. Do they, do they, are they made aware of that, Cindy? I mean, I, do they know kind of how the configuration will be set up? Cuz I, I wouldn't have known that, you know, based on the paper we have.
What we're gonna do is submit a full building permit for the application and go through the whole process with building inspectors. All, you know, all listing inspectors, fire inspector will come through and also verify everything meets code.
The fire department actually tells them where the.
Yes, they tell us.
Tell us how they wanna see things done. And so we'll just hear what they say. So we're just asking if it's okay, come through and change the, you know, special use and do this, and just have a nice, small, speak easy. Twenty to thirty people, I would say. You could be in the bar, out of bar, or a combination of the two, where they rent the space out. So you're really not gonna have, you know, party in, party out. It's gonna be one cohesive unit. It couldn't throw it out that large. So it's gonna be more for smaller apps here. You've got clientele that wanna come and just give six or ten people, twelve people, and just rent the space, keep it nice and quiet. You know, small mendels and grace and things like that. So very low-key kind of thing.
Anything else?
Curious, just curious, why the change in the two designs, which are pretty dramatically different?
Uh, we didn't wanna spend the money to tear the roof off in the first one. The first one, we would have to tear the roof off and, and square it off. So we went with the second one that you got today, and that just stays with the footprint of the building. And we'll just be doing all the demo work inside.
So the footprint does not change? I was a little confused, I guess, cuz the, it's on a little different subject, but the project description here says, taking existing old cottage and remodeling it and turning it into an event space and bar. Remodeling of the inside, cleaning, et cetera, putting, and putting in a new alleyway and backyard. I just didn't derive from that description of the project of, you know, two different centers of activity. One would be inside and one would be outside, and in point of fact, the one outside seems to be more intense than the one inside where.
Most restaurants have indoor/outdoor anyways.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. And when things get going, all it takes is an open door to distribute the noise from the inside to the outside anyway. So I, I understand. But it's just, when I first read this, I thought it was gonna be something a little different than what it's turned out to be, but that's your prerogative.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Any at this point additional meeting participants who wanna comment in favor of the supporting comments for the project or the measure before the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to those who hold opposing comments and their opportunity to speak. Catherine?
All right, everyone, I can't doubt. My name is Catherine Simon. I'm the owner of the Maplewood Hotel, which is directly adjacent to the project. I wanna stress that in my letter that I gave you, that it's very important. I applaud anyone that wants to improve their business. But I would be negligent in saying that this project has a very negative impact on my business, the business of the Wickwood, the business of the Sagatuck Inn, and the new Marywood Manor, and probably waifing even down to Judson Heath. I provided you two pictures on your handout from this evening, and I got something off of Google Maps. And the second picture, which is in color, shows my fence. That's my swimming pool, and there's the yard, which the outdoor events will take place. So you can see that there is simply nothing but a fence that separates the noise. I'll read you parts of what I wrote, because I wanna take most of my five minutes up now with concerns I have about their change in plan and some other questions that need to be addressed. I've already provided the commission a lengthy letter outlining multiple issues of concern. This time, I'd like to reiterate two areas of worry. I took a number of phrases out of the information we were given. This is directly from the ordinance. What often doesn't get addressed is the subjectivity that we're all talking about. We have a noise ordinance here in Sagatuck. It's never enforced. I can assure you that noise from that event, when you look at the fence, is gonna be impacting my clientele and negatively impacting my guests. So you have the phrases here that are supposed to be under consideration for the surrounding yes vote on everyone concerned within that district. All of the above considerations directly impact the Maplewood Hotel, four other lodging establishments, and surrounding residential properties. Noise and band vibrations will negatively impact all guests utilizing my deck pool and sleeping rooms. Presently, the house cottage and dumpster area buffer some of the band racket and sound from Wicks Bar and Grill. Keep in mind, celebratory events often bring louder partygoers and potential disruption. Personally, unless it's my own party, I'm not interested in hearing the electric slide or some other group bellowing out, "We are family" at midnight. I would assume that the house cottage currently rent for two to four individuals at any given time. That would equate to two additional vehicles. If the change of use is approved, the impact of cars may well be twenty times larger. Equally important is the responsibility to protect the surrounding land values. That is discussed in the handouts you were given. Protect land values. Please explain how the planning commission justifies the gain of one business over the potential loss of several others. While some may perceive my analysis to be subjective, my comments are sustained. Multiple studies can be found on the internet supporting the fact that additional noise adjacent to a residential area has a direct impact on land values and the health of residents. Quote, "Ask any real estate professional. They will tell you that properties in close proximity to noise sources are typically valued lower in the marketplace." While many of you may identify the majority of standards have been satisfied, I ask you to give equal weight to the considerations put forth as outlined. Presently, the only commercial business facing Mary Street is Lucky Stone Bed and Breakfast, formerly known as Marywood Manor. The Maplewood Hotel represents a historic contribution to the downtown and overall community. I ask you to maintain the integrity and quietude of this mixed-use zone. And I talked to that in my letter that you got in advance of this evening's net meeting, that you have the tennis courts, you have the playground next to me, and you have Tilson, Bertilstrom Park area. All of that is a nice break from the heavier downtown area and segways north where my property abuts the Wiley House, the Mrs. Beckins House directly across the street, et cetera. And now we're talking about creating more intensity in the use of that property. What?
One more minute.
Well, she went one more than five. Um, and so I, I would like questions relative to, I also wanna say, your change in plans, isn't that my parking lot that you're now accessing?
No, that's, that's the ser- the survey there. That's not your parking. There's a sidewalk. That's not yours.
Well, I talked to the fire chief, and the only access that you really have other than that five feet, the property is non-conforming. I'd like to know how you changed the use. I thought I was on planning commission twenty-five years ago. I thought when you change the use, that it has to be conforming to what the new regs are. Secondly, if you're putting in a breezeway, is that a pergola, pergola? Is that a new structure? I thought you can't enhance the non-conformance. Can you enhance non-conformance on something that's not allowed?
The additions have to meet the standards for the setbacks. The existing structures are allowed to remain. So it's not increasing the non-conformity. If she wanted to build in that five-foot setback there, that would increase the non-conformity, but the structure, the construction will not be close to any property line.
But. It's an addition.
I've cut you off for five minutes. Sorry.
I do wanna ask my question about the photograph. Thank you, Catherine, for speaking to us. I do have one question about the photograph, though. This brings into this fence, for those of you that don't have this, this fence, is that on your property, Christine, or is that on? Yeah, we do. Is that fence on your property, or is that?
Yes.
Okay. So the other side of this fence is.
IVN.
Okay. So you're gonna have to get an easement, I think, to be able to allow an egress from here through that alley.
Okay.
I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just saying, now that I look at this.
Well, I mean, I guess, like, we should.
And I don't know, that's, that's outside of tonight's discussion, but I think something else that is
That's a fight, I mean.
A little problematic with the, yeah, so.
I mean, I can, you know, before it gets approved, I can meet with the chief anyways.
Does that, does that make sense, the question I'm asking?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Other opposing comments, up to five minutes in length?
I'm Jane Clank. I own the end of Sagatuck. I'm directly across the parking lot from Wicks Park. Christine's made a lot of promises tonight, but promises are just promises. The occupancy of that building is about eighty people with tables and chairs. Okay, so she says it's gonna be twenty-five. Is it gonna be twenty-five? She has every right to make it eighty. That puts a lot of intensity on the property. A bachelorette party will raise you out of bed. And, you know, there's only gonna be one person playing music. That's a promise, but that's not reality. And she has a very, very poor track record about noise. Bands are supposed to be inside at eleven o'clock. She brings her band inside, but she leaves the doors and windows open, so it might just as well be outside. The bands usually finish up by twelve to twelve-thirty, not eleven o'clock. I mean, tho- those are just promises, and the problem with Sagatuck is that we have no enforcement. Nobody enforces anything. So you can say all the things you wanna say that she has to do, but nobody's going to enforce them. And this is putting a lot. And this is putting a lot, a lot of intensity on this property. And there's an old saying, I've been in government a long time, old saying about, didn't you see that bar when you bought your house? Okay, you bought a nice restaurant that was all enclosed. It was Billy's Boat House. It did all of the business, to use our language. But it was all inside. There wasn't bands. There wasn't. Okay, so now there's bands. Didn't she see those four bed and breakfasts that wrapped all the way around her property? Didn't she see those? Now she's impeding on our businesses. We sell sleep. And and it doesn't start at 2:00 in the morning. So she's, she's impeding on our right to do business on that, on our own property. Who've been there much longer than she has. I've been there 43 years now. And I don't deserve to be shouted out. So those are my feelings right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you. Anyone else opposing comments? Are we going, we're going to read these? I know that we can read Catherine's letter.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we read into the record, the written communications. I'd be happy to start with Brady, excuse me, Brady Bailiff, I believe is how you pronounce his last name, 421 Water Street, the IV LLC. Date of this email is Tuesday, February 15th, 2022, addressed to the zoning administrator. Dear Cindy, Christine explained to me her intent to create an outdoor event and bar space, which I assume, as you mentioned, is allowable under the current zoning for her parcel. In the past, a wooden privacy fence existing between her property and my property was adequate for the residential use of her space in the outdoor storage area of the bar and grill portion of her property. However, with the possibility of music until 11:00 PM and larger outdoor, outdoor crowds even past this hour, I am concerned that a simple wooden privacy fence may be inadequate, considering the residential use of my property in that general vicinity. As you may know, the front porch of my residence is screened and is, and is a popular place for my guests to sit, visit and enjoy the moderate underlying sounds of the area. My front porch is directly across from the area being developed and would no doubt be negatively impacted by additional noise generated from the increased intensity at Christine's property. A similar noise impact would be felt by four of my six guest rooms on the second floor of my residence. The plans only mention that the current fence will be updated and the drawings give no indication of this fence or the vegetation plan for the backyard from the visual or noise abatement perspective. So I really don't know what is planned to minimize the impact to the quiet environment and my, to the quiet enjoyment of my property for myself and my guests who come to relax in relative peace and quiet. I believe that a more substantial wall and vegetation would be appropriate, similar to that which separates my property from the city park to the east. I have a good relationship with Christine and I wish her the best. But I do not think the plans presented fully address the impact of the residential operations of my property. Respectfully, Bob. Brady Bailiff, 421 Water Street.
As I said, the other written one is, is Catherine's written letter, which kind of gives me the
Yeah, it's
brings up an issue on the whole five-minute thing. If you're gonna have five minutes and then turn around and read a two-page letter.
But it was important to read this in the record for someone who's not
I understand. No, no, that's perfect. I, I mean, you understand what I'm saying, Catherine? I mean, it's a matter of record. It's a matter of public record and it's available for anybody who wants to read it, so. And it does touch on points you already touched on as well, so it's not completely out of out of the public ear, if you will. Any other additional comments in opposition? I guess I asked that once. We have opportunity for general comments. Never sure exactly what that is. But if you have general comments or think you do, you can make them now. And we have there being no general comments, we have the opportunity to go back through the the cycle and start over again with comments from the supporting comments, so on and so forth, opposing in general, so. Jane? Pardon me? You can, but you gotta do it in, if it's in, based on what you said, I'm assuming it's not a supporting one, so. Supporting comments first. There being none, then. Yes, no, that's where, yeah, exactly right.
Um. So I just want to be clear and not say that I'm going to make promises. That live music happens everywhere. You can hear the music over the river. Live music is happening. Noise happens. We have a ton of noise here in Sagatuck. My goal and my whole purpose of this project and why it started, I want to be clear about, is because it is an eyesore. The alley is disgusting. The house is disgusting. It needs to be improved. So by doing that, I would like to improve it so that it's a business transaction for myself and for Wick's Park and to give the community a place, another place to enjoy. So I want to be clear that that's what the main thing is. It's not to have more live music and to push people out and do, it is to improve that area. And anyone that drives by can say, will say that that house is ugly and my gate looks terrible and the fence needs to be redone in the back. And I'm happy to give more schematics on the back fence. I'm happy to meet with obviously the fire chief to go over more things like that. I'm happy to say I won't put music outside. But it is an improvement to this land. And it's stuff that needs to keep happening in Sagatuck for improvement. You know, we have the Butler Deck. That's going to be amazing. That whole side of town where Wicks are, that used to be, no one used to walk down there. Now everyone walks down to get a grilled cheese at the shack, go to Retro Boat. It's just, I'm just trying to prove, improve the land. I'm not trying to do anything by bringing a nightclub about bringing concerts, anything of that value. And if you, you know, you can say it's a promise and if, you know, you don't take my word, then you know, I can't make you do that. But it really, I'm just trying to improve that land. I've been there for 13 years and, and properties need to evolve. And my property needs to evolve a little bit. It needs to get cleaned up. It needs to do this. So that is the main goal of this, is to improve that land. Not to have music, not to make things crazy over there, not to be, I mean, I love my neighbors. I try to be nothing but neighborly with everybody. So that's never my intention to make anyone upset about that. So it's to improve the land and however I have to work with my neighbors and work with you and work with the chief, I'm open to doing. Thank you.
Any other additional in support? Opposing?
I would ask the planning commission not to rule this tonight. I think it's very important that historic rule on this, that building is 120 years old. It was remodeled in the 50s. But that makes it 70 years old and it is a contributing factor to the community. So I think that should be ruled on by historic. I think that the fire department needs to do a site plan review on this. They have not had a chance or an opportunity or had the material to do a site plan review. Public hasn't even been made aware of where things are on the site plan. We don't know where that breezeway, even what it's going to look like or where it's going to be. I think that it's way too soon to to weigh in on this for the planning commission. There's a lot of things that need to be put into place first and to leave the fire department to be the deciding factor. That's not fair for the fire department. They shouldn't be the bad guy in this. So I think you should delay any decision tonight about what's going to happen at Wick's Park. I think there's a lot more things that need to be available to the community and to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Any other opposing? Can read your letter, Catherine?
I'll save you, I'll save you the pain. I'll just reiterate what Jane said. I would ask you to table it. I think it's very important to get the fire department. When I met with Cindy and Jane, we stopped in and had a few questions. There are or is an existing setback that is not accurate. Am I correct, Cindy? 10 feet it's supposed to be, not, it's five feet?
It's legal non-conforming.
Whatever that humbo jumbo means, legal non-conforming. And please, please, I ask all of you, look at the subjectivity in this ordinance. You have bed and breakfast. We sell sleep. I talked about the quietude of the segue to the area. That is equally important to that end of town. It's very important. And this will change the value of my business absolutely and Jane's and Wickwood, which is doing a horrendous job right now to improve that property and remodel. Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments? I will close the public comment section of our meeting and move on to commission deliberation. Feel free to free with your thoughts, remarks, whatever. I, before we start, I did in the meeting we all were in, or several of us were in with the Michigan State people teaching us how to do what we're supposed to do. Early on, or at least early for me, because I got there late, but early on they mentioned, I won't get it exactly right, but they mentioned that, oh, do you have it there? Look at you. See if I get how close I get to being right.
There's a test, Dan.
50/50 shot. That, that what we do comes, really becomes difficult when one person's rights come up against another person's rights, which doesn't necessarily val- value one set of rights over the other, but ultimately some sorts of cause and struck me is reading this before this even, but after, after that meeting, I sent you a note in the meeting. I said, oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
This is what, this is, you know, this is not an easy one to get thrown in front of you. But that's the nature of the deal, so that's what you get the big bucks for. Oh, wait, you don't get any money, so.
I would comment that, again, I want to thank Cindy and the city staff and everybody that's here tonight that has either submitted correspondence or has spoken to us, because that's what this is about, is to hear from the people that are directly impacted by this decision. That's important for me personally. As the chair alluded to, it's a very difficult decision to make. At this point, I am not comfortable taking action on this request without additional information.
I feel the same way.
And I'd like to make a motion that we table this request until we get additional information from the Sagatuck Township Fire Department regarding the compatibility of this project with fire code.
Could I ask you to consider holding the motion for just a moment so that in the event anyone else wanted to speak in it, one way or the other in advance?
Sure.
That, that, nobody feels like they got cut off from
Well, I would, yeah, right. Well, I would think we could get a second, if we get a second and then
And we could do discussion. That's fine. If you second it. Motion by Gardner, second by Ms. Gaunt to table this matter.
I also
Pending.
Pardon me?
Table the matter pending.
Table the matter pending.
Review by the Sagatuck Township Fire Department. And Cindy, I did have a question about this district or the historic district commission. I could not see anything in the ordinance that restricts our ability to take action without their review. Is there a pecking order here?
No, there is not. You just have to have approval from both boards.
Okay.
And just because one approves it doesn't mean the other one will or has to. They're so
Okay, thank you.
One has to be first, so.
Thank you. So I think with the Sagatuck Township Fire Department, in my opinion, there are substantial questions about the ability of this project to meet code. And again, that's going to be left up to the experts, but just a little bit, a little bit that I know and some of the things that were presented this evening, I questioned the
Agreed. I think the presentations were very compelling on both sides. And I think your motion is a good one, so.
I, I agree as well. I guess one point of discussion that I would raise is, is there additional information? We want, I just, you know, this might be a good opportunity if there's additional information we need as well. I, I don't know, you know, I know there was some discussion of the zoning that I admit I didn't, you know, completely follow. I know I've read the zoning, you know, the non-conforming section and I, and I see what I see, I see the kind of broad brushstrokes of what the issue may be, but I don't know if we want more information on that. And the other thing I'll just mention that if we want more information on is, I know we talked about some details like the fencing and I know Christine mentioned she could provide more schematics and things like that. So anyway, just want to throw out if we, this might be a time if we want to specify other information we feel like we need.
Do we need a, an improved site plan? I don't know. Site plan would, I mean, would normally, maybe I'm missing something here, but that would spell out chapter and verse on the breezeway and that type of a thing and and fencing and lighting. And all of that stuff normally is what we would get in a well-detailed site plan.
I think it's part of what we have to do. All of this is part of what we have to do because we owe that to the applicant. You can't just
We're just not
We're just tabling it. Good luck. We have to tell them
Right.
why we're tabling it, what we want to see.
And these things add up to me to be a health, safety, welfare, the classic health, safety, welfare issues. You know, I'm just, I'm just concerned about this. Of course, some of that will be a large part of that will probably be addressed by the fire. I think we'd need to lean on the good auspices of the fire department to kind of help us through that to help determine whether this type of thing in the backyard is is doable. So anyway, that's
So my, my thought process on that is that and again, I don't know what the exact order of things are, but it would seem to me that the applicant would meet with the township fire district and then come back with a adjusted site plan to reflect compliance with the fire district directions. That would then, as a planning commission, I feel more comfortable looking at that and saying it would show these are great elevations. They, they help me understand that there's, this, this is planned to be a quality project. But that in conjunction with this is what I would like to see and that would, even though I'm not suggesting we need a new survey, but would see a better overview of exactly how that's going to lay out after the fire district has had a chance to meet with you and, and give you some feedback.
But would that be something that the fire department would sign off on? In terms of the plan itself, the revised plan?
Fire department can, my understanding, the fire department could sign off at multiple stages. They sign off on plans and they sign off on the reality of it and they sign on the physical. Jane, you probably have a better answer on that than I do, but that's my understanding. It's not a once and done kind of thing. If the door heights aren't what they were supposed to be physically, if who knows what, the lights aren't where they're supposed to be, whatever it was, they can come right back and say, no, you gotta do this, you gotta, whatever.
That's why there's the, the original plan is signed off on and that would be
Yeah, I know what you're asking, right?
Is it signed off on and that would be the plan that we would use in consideration? That would be both the fire department and the building inspector. Right. Makes sense. I think that's what we need.
Yes, yes. And I think that's consistent with what the regulations say about the information that we use.
And Cindy, to what Ann said, as regards any additional light or clarity we need on zoning related to this event, to this particular is there something we don't have or should have or?
The non-conforming section, the non-conforming question?
I don't know. That might be one, yeah.
Yeah, that, the, the proposed plan meets the zoning requirements for non-conforming structures.
And no variance is needed from the ZBA?
Because it's existing legal, non-conforming.
Does that non-conforming, does that have to do with Does that non-conforming, um, does that have to do with use as well as the footprint of the? It's, it's non-conforming.
It's a non-conforming structure.
In terms of setback.
And the use as a restaurant or a bar is permitted in that zone district after site plan review approval and a special use permit. So that's really what you're here to look at.
We're halfway through that.
The site plan review and the special land use. And I did put all those conditions in the memo. So that's what, that's what you're here to balance, the rights of one property owner to the next property owner.
I stand by my motion.
Thank you for your work on this.
I think that's something that I think most people don't realize how much effort goes into getting us ready for this conversation, so thank you.
Any additional commissioner comments? Then we will, I will call for the vote. Voice vote.
Would you mind rereading the, uh, motion, Cindy, please?
Motion to table by Gardner, second by Gaunt to review, for review by the fire department. More detailed size plan, site plan. I can't read my writing there. Something about the, the chapter and verse on the fence, what the fence will look like and what it will consist of.
Fire was on that list, just spaced.
Fire department?
Was on that list?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just spaced. So, all in favor of the motion, which would be to table the measure? She said no, she said.
Be taken to voice vote on a table in motion.
Uh, those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Yes. Those opposed signify by saying no. There being none, the motion passes and that measure is tabled. Till next time.
I, I do have another question, my comment that was made in our packet regarding the sidewalk canopy revocable licenses. Is that, is that the legislative body's responsibility? Just take up that issue? Okay.
Yes, and that, um, needs to be renewed or extended.
And I'm assuming that'll be brought to the.
About that.
Okay.
Later and we'll get that on council agenda.
That's not under our purview. Okay, thank you.
We have, beyond the communications related to this measure, we have no other communications and no boards and committees reports. Public comment? You have a comment?
A communication.
Certainly.
This is a communication from me. I did line up David Jurasic.
Oh, excellent.
For our March seventeen meeting to talk about the process of planning for your master planning.
Good, we can have green beer.
I told him to keep it like an hour, hour and a half, because you will have already had that chapter in your Michigan State planning. But this is a more practical kind of discussion about what really actually happens during that planning for the plan.
We have a time for that, do you know?
It's our regular March meeting.
Oh, the regular meeting.
I don't have any other applications.
We'll be reviewing this.
So he's lined up to do that. He will be here in person.
That's a very good communication, Cindy. Uh, so we move to our final public comment. Time, if you're not already talked out, limited to three minutes on any subject. Approach the bench, as they say.
I hope I can hold this to three minutes. Back two years ago when I ran for council, the council, the big cry was, we're the council that gets things done. We, we're the council that moves things forward. And that's great. We're all about the expansion of business. That's great too. We're gonna make this a year round town. That doesn't seem to have happened this year, but maybe next year. But in the last year, I would ask that we put a moratorium on expansion of businesses until we address parking. Several years ago, we decided not to do, address parking, but that's when we had small businesses starting up that needed two or three parking places. Um, in the past year, we've decided, the council has decided, it's okay to hold a wedding in Wicks Park or in Coughlin Park for two hundred people. That means a hundred more cars in town on a Saturday afternoon. And there's all kinds of rules they put into place where you have to shuttle in the people and you need to have a parking lot, blah, blah, blah. And then the butler just put in a three hundred and twelve seat deck. That's another hundred and fifty parking places on a nice Saturday afternoon. And then Wicks Park probably will add another fifty parking places to that. And as all these businesses expand, where's the personnel gonna park? Their employees have no parking. There's no parking. And whenever you bring this up, they, the, the pat answer is, well, you can park at the high school up on the hill. So I went up on the hill and I counted the parking places. There's a hundred and thirty-three parking places and there's seven handicap parking places. That's great, but those have been full for years, as well as all the streets on the hill. You people that live up there know that the parking is just god awful. You can't hardly drive down the street. The fire department prays that there won't be a fire because you won't be able to get to it. So I would ask you, before you expand the city any further, that you look at parking. We need to establish parking. You can't walk to Sagetuck. You have to drive here. There's the parking lot next to the SCA. Maybe there needs to be a parking garage there. This is a very important piece. If you're going to build our community any further than what it is, you can't bring people to town and they don't have any place to park. The road rage is phenomenal here. I sit on my front porch, I look at people killing each other because somebody had the audacity to stop and turn left into the office. They're screaming and yelling at each other. And when this is brought up in a meeting, they go, oh, that doesn't happen. Well, how do you know it doesn't happen? You don't live downtown. You don't watch it day after day after day. So we need to do something about parking. Build a parking ring. Here's an idea. How about an ice skating rink at the top of that park ramp during the winter? That will bring people to town and they will have a place to park. The money, I don't know where the money's gonna come from. I see council waste money day after day after day. So, you know, and there must be some place, there must be some grant, there must be something. Maybe the CVB, who had a huge increase could give us some money for parking. It would very much behoove the, um, all the people in town or the outline of B and Bs that send people to town. So we need, we need to do something about parking before we expand the city another inch. Then my second request is, we need a code enforcement officer. Nobody enforces the code. You can make codes till the cows come home. You can make people, you can tell people when they want things, well, you have to do this and you have to do this and you have to do, do this. Unless there's somebody to make sure they do that, it isn't worth the paper it's written on. So we need a code enforcement official. I've been saying this for years. I never got anywhere with it, but it's time. Because there's lots of promises made, but the promises aren't kept. So those are my requests from you and I thank you for tabling this because I think this is an important issue coming up with Wicks Park in. So thank you and hopefully you'll take this under consideration that we have got to do something about parking. There is no parking and it gets worse every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane. Anyone else? Public comments? Limited to three minutes, which you went over, just FYI. When I used to be in front of council and you were sitting, you didn't nail me for that in a heartbeat, so. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying yes, yes. Those opposed, no. Richard? Or adjourn?
I said yes. We need, we need to like, Richard H., Richard C. Okay, Richard one, Richard two, I don't know. I don't think we're gonna get it.